Have your attention, we'll go ahead and get our meeting called to order. It's good to see everybody this afternoon. And today is our workshop meeting and just remind everyone, we do not vote on these items tonight. We'll be voting on those items in, at our regular council meeting on the first Monday. But I'd like to, before we get started, take a few minutes just to recognize a familiar face in the room. Our former city manager, who has now returned as our interim city manager, Mr. Hunter Walker. So Hunter, we're glad to have you with us tonight.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes.
I told everybody that the steps have gotten a lot steeper and there's much more, many more of them than twenty years ago. So I'm glad to be back, I'm glad to be a part of the community again. Tiff had meant so much to my family and I twenty years ago. So it's kind of, it's a little, it's a little weird to be back, but I'm glad to be a part of working for everybody.
Well, thank you Hunter, we're glad to have you back too. So I know you've been busy the last couple of days, meeting with departments and department heads and, and just kind of getting your feet wet. So we, we appreciate those efforts and everything that you've got going on. We'll go ahead and call on our first item to discuss on our workshop agenda, which is the ordinance for alcohol sales at festivals. And I'm going to go ahead and address that. This is the item that Rob's been working on regarding the armbands and the sale of armbands when there's alcoholic beverages sold. We've sent the copy of the ordinance out to the outreach marketing group, which is the group that handles rhythm and ribs and does the Rock the Block Street festivals and, and really does most of the events that this would apply to. They're still commenting on it. So we've had a couple of, a couple of folks make some suggestions or comments, some liked it, some maybe not so much. So we're still working on that. So there's really no need, unless y'all had any specifics you wanted to discuss, we're just kind of waiting on the rest of their input to come in. So any other comments on that?
No.
Alright, item number two is the agreement with Behavioral Health Service of South Georgia for employee assistance program. And that's Carla Cooper and Jeanetta Watson.
And Jeanetta was unable to be here. She sent Brenda in place. And we have had this contract for years and years. It's just time for renewal. And Rob kind of reworked it a little bit. But basically, it talks about our services through behavioral, behavioral health services for our employees. And I'm gonna let Brenda kind of talk to you a little bit about what they do.
Okay.
To Behavioral Health Services, we are a community service organization. We are located here in Tiff, Tiff, Austin and Adele. And we provide an array of services outpatient, services for children and adults. On our CNA side, we provide mental health, substance abuse, recovery group, anger management, as well as on our adult side. We have developmental development service centers to provide services for adults as well. In our groups, we do have relationships with the judicial circuits throughout Alapahoa and Tiff as well as Southern. And so through our array of services, we try to connect with the community to address whatever need. If it is a company may have a need of anger management or they may need to have a client come in, that may need some additional evaluations or assessments. So we just try to make sure, we try to cater to the mental health and substance abuse need of each community.
Sure, okay. Our contract provides our employees and their immediate family with five visits for counseling for the services that they will counsel for. If it is deemed that they need more than five, then it goes either towards their insurance or, you know, they work out payment plans or things. So the agreement is two thousand a year and it is completely confidential. I get nothing saying that you, we've even had five people, you know, I get nothing. I can tell you though, that some employees in the past have volunteered to me and told me that it was a great, great benefit for them.
That's good, okay, good.
So that, that was good, you know, even though, you know, I technically can't, but I mean, it's good to be at.
And all of the employees are aware of the procedure and how to get in touch and that?
Yes, yes, we do have, we have the information in our office, I go over it with them at orientation also, so.
Okay, okay.
Do you, like period, orientation is one of them periodically?
Orientation is every new employee. We used to do it quarterly, every six months, whenever. I find it easier to do it as the employee comes in.
But three, four years, five years down the road, is there a, you know?
Is there like a reminder session or something?
I can't remember last year what I.
Um, well, I do see periodic things out, like they had a different house, um, a couple of weeks.
Back in May.
May, I sent that out to employees to keep it on their mind, but.
At least annually, they ought to be advised.
And Behavioral Health. Right, and we have a market, I'm a marketing engagement coordinator. So I'm very involved in the community and I attend family connections meetings, very involved, but just different to the chamber as well.
Yeah.
So we attend all these meetings throughout the different counties, because we service ten counties.
Right.
So we try to make sure that that information constantly gets out and then we have events that we do at the open house or in the paper. So it's just that constant check in and just, and then of course I would check in with Ms. Cooper. I just started in January with, with Behavioral Health Service of South Georgia. But I will be checking in with Ms. Cooper just to see if there's anything additional that may be needed in order to get the information out to our employees, trying to speak with them personally, just as a group, everyone, just to kind of tell them a little bit more about what we do.
They also do our substance abuse training every two to three years. So they're in, they're with our employees every two to three years talking about substance abuse and giving this information out.
Okay, very good. Any other questions or?
Cause I just might add, one of the things that we did with the contracts is let it renew every year.
Yeah.
Unless we give thirty days notice prior to the, you know, prior to the expiration of the current term.
Okay.
According to the statute. The, as it says, two thousand dollars a year, it'll remain that on each renewal period unless we change that.
Sure, sure. Well, it's a great service and thank you for that. That's, that's certainly needed unfortunately, some, with some of the things going on in the world today and, and what happens with families. So it's nice to have those good partners and resources to work with us to help our, help our employees in any way that we can. So thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you Carla, thank you Brenda.
Thank you, I'll have the next item up soon.
Oh, yes you do, I want you to stay right where you are and that's the amendment to personnel policy. We got, help is on the way. Go ahead Johnny's doing it.
Help is on the way.
Um, our current personnel policy, as you know, that Rob and I have been working on revising the policy for some time now. And it's all Rob's fault that we can't get it revised.
We find that kind of hinders a lot of things that we try to do.
That is not true.
We do hope that soon we can get back working on that. But this one section in particular, we did want to change. You can see what the current wording is. It limits a part-time pensioner to come back to only one thousand forty hours. And we've actually had part-time pensioners come back at more than those hours. So we felt like we needed to go ahead and get that changed. We want to allow them to be hired back at full or part-time. And the IRS regulations are, there must be a definite separation. In other words, they can't retire today and be back at work tomorrow during retirement. Our pension plan, the retirement plan document says, or calls for a ninety day separation. So that's a three months, that would be in compliance with IRS. But the wording would say, as you see here, it would say that they must comply with IRS federal state regulations as well as our pension plan. So any, that covers any new regulations that come, come down. They, according to our actuary, they would not actually have to revest, they're vested. So if they were to come back to work, when they leave in two years, five years, whatever, their benefit would just be recalculated. I don't foresee salaries really being increased because our plan calls for sixty consecutive highest salaries. And so unless they came back for five years at a higher salary than they left.
Right.
The salary would not be recalculated, it would be just the years of service.
Right.
And I did just a little kind of calculation benefit. If someone retired with their average salary of thirty-five thousand and they had twenty-five years in, their benefit would be somewhere around fifteen hundred. If they came back and worked another five years, but were making the thirty-five or less, their benefit would increase two hundred and eighteen dollars a month. Now, keep in mind that they're coming back now in our portion of the plan that there's a five percent contribution. And so we're actually to the better for about three years and something before they actually make any money off of that.
Right, okay. Any other questions?
How, how many employees do we have right now that would fit the proposed change?
Right now, we have none, we have no retirees that are back.
Do we have, do we have an interest or something? Why would we want to change that?
Possibly. Well, and like I said in the past, if you remember Judy Dormy, Judy Dormy came back part-time and she worked more than twenty hours a week when she came back.
I would just figure as someone who, you know, retired, if they retired at sixty-five would, you know, full-time would be a, that'd be a, that'd be a tough, tough deal, you know, for someone to do a full-time job.
Right. Again, I don't foresee a lot of this happening. But if they retire under our twenty-five fifty-five.
It depends on what, I mean, obviously, an officer of the law or whatever, somebody came back wanting to be a police officer or whatever. That would be a hu, I mean, you know, the requirement, the, that would be a huge issue, I guess, liability wise.
If they, if they retired at fifty-five years old though, left for three months.
Well, I mean, that's, in my, in my suspicion, that would be, why would you, why would you do that? Why did you do that? You know, why, why did you retire at fifty-five? Hopefully, we have enough, you know, when, when somebody comes up to retire at fifty-five, that they went through the steps and make sure that retiring at fifty-five is the right financial decision. And, I mean, I would hope that your department would also walk through them and say, listen, you know, before you make that step, I know it's your choice, but, you know, here's some things that I think that would make sense for you to do before you decide to pull that, pull that plug, or not pull the plug is a bad term.
If they have, if they have the twenty-five years of service though, there's no penalty to retire at fifty-five.
That's right, that's right.
So, you know, you retire at fifty-five with full benefits and although you're not getting the COLA.
Right.
And you're not getting your years of service that you could have.
Sure, sure.
But, you know, you get to retirement and six months of your age, you're coming back and start working.
But then you're coming back to work.
And so what's, I guess, so what's the benefit in it, you think, to wait in ninety days, what's?
Well, the ninety days is an IRS regulation.
Okay, but, but so why would they do that? Financially, is this gonna be a, draw their pension and, and come back and work and do both?
You'd come back and work.
And we would want to do that, why?
I would say, I understand currently you've done it from part-time. Of course, the, the, the requirement is, is of your plan now is part-time, this would just give you the option to do the other. I don't know that it would happen an awful lot. Well, that's what I'm saying, that's why, I mean, I don't think it would happen a lot, much to even change what we have.
You'd have that knowledge and that experience.
We do allow them to come back with that in part-time status. Now, does a part-time, is a part-time employee, they don't receive the, the benefits?
Even with this change, they wouldn't receive any benefits unless it was full-time.
Unless it was a full-time employee.
I just see where this, I mean, the option is open. If you get somebody that comes up, they have already retired, they might have, you know, decided, listen, retirement life is not for me. And you have a position, a full-time position that would, this guy could really fill and do a good job. This would give you the option to hire him full-time. Whereas it, as it stands right now, you wouldn't be able to do that because you only can hire him part-time where it's worth it. So I mean, it gives you the option to hire somebody full-time, doesn't mean you have to.
Any other questions or anything Carla? Alright, thank you Carla. Alright, item number four is discussion of the twenty seventeen millage rate in the twenty sixteen tax digest, Ms. Lois Love.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, Ms. Love.
The agenda before you is a, a state requirement. It's in order for the city to be in compliance with state law, the official millage rate has to be set with the current digest that the Tiff County has submitted to us and the M and L, it must be approved. This is just setting the, the millage rate that was approved in the budget and at nine point seven five nine mils and allowed us to submit the document, the T thirty-two form, which is a state form showing the rollback rate and the other documentations that the county requires in order to carry the digest to the state, basically.
Okay, any questions on the tax digest and being in compliance on this? Alright Lois, you've got the next couple of things, so just roll on.
Roll on, okay.
The next one on your agenda is the resolution approving the GMA ninety-eight lease pool program change in trustee and authorizing the execution of the agreement. And that is a request to change the trustee from the Bank of New York Mellon to Regions Bank with the appropriate agreement. That's in, there's attachment A, B and C that goes along with that, the escrow agent, repurchase agreement and so forth. And what, GMA's been working on this for a good while, it's our lease pool, ninety-eight lease pool. And they feel like the service will be better, also the employees that used to be with New York Mellon is with Regions now. And they, of course, New York Mellon has agreed to all this as well.
Any questions about the lease pool and those changes? Alright.
The next item on the agenda is also related to the ninety-eight lease pool program. And that is to approve a resolution to amend the equipment list, increasing the percentage of software financing from the current level of only ten percent of the equipment requests up to fifty percent. So this will be, and this is a request going forward, and this will allow us, if we have computer equipment or software financing needs, we can invest, or we can finance up to fifty percent of our lease pool dollars versus currently, we can only finance up to ten percent.
That's a good, that's a good change.
So that's a good change.
Okay, alright, any questions on the, on that change? Okay, that makes perfectly good sense, alright. I think that's everything for Lois so far, so. And I meant to point out, we do have a special call meeting after this meeting to approve some of those items, or not approve, or whatever, we vote on them, I should say. Our next item is number seven, the resolution for alcoholic beverage license. And I know Jessica, you've got a couple there, so just take all of those together if you want to.
Yes, the first one's Ruby Tuesdays, they have a new manager. The manager did have backgrounds, but the backgrounds were older charges that should not affect the alcohol license and staff is recommending that one for approval.
Okay.
The second one is the Pub, which was previously the Lamp Ladder Pub, it's under new ownership. There was a background on it also, but it stated it should not affect the issuance of the license. And the Pub is also requesting distilled spirits at a location which they didn't currently, previously have, under forward ownership. So staff is recommending approval of both of those items.
Okay, alright, any questions on those applications?
Since we have a special call meeting, is there a way to add those to the special call meeting? Will there be a reason why we can't? I mean, since there, I mean, yeah.
Might as well, that's fine with me. When we get to that point, we'll just, we'll approve the.
Especially with Ruby Tuesdays, it's just the manager change.
Yes.
Yeah, manager change and then now the new ownership with the Pub, they would probably need, I don't know when they plan on opening, but I hope soon.
I mean, I would imagine so.
He's doing some room now, so, I don't think he's August.
It's gonna be thirty days.
Thirty days from when they close, that's what they could all, I wouldn't have a sale been true, I don't win the sale.
Well, the only drinks once you.
But as long as you're okay with that.
So, so just for my own education, so because Ruby Tuesdays has a new manager, they have to then do that?
Yes, they have to be, because they're, that's the main person that's in charge of that one.
So either ma, changing manager or changing owner. Causes you to have to, okay.
Okay, so we want to, we'll want to add both of those then, is what you're saying, to the agenda?
Yeah.
As long as you're okay with that.
Yeah, I don't see it.
Okay. Okay, alright, our next item is number nine, that's also Jessica on the T grant.
This resolution was a part of the Streetscape three project. I sent the project map, it's kind of all over downtown, but it's Commerce Way, South Main and north of Main, uh, Second Street. This is an older project, we had Streetscape, they completed the plans and we've submitted the final plans and this is just to move forward with the actual construction and release the funding from G dot. So this portion will take us into construction. And they're planning on being able to bid around September of this year. So this is just a keep moving forward with that project.
One question I have, if you don't mind me asking, if you know, we get a lot of requests, or I know I do, and certainly did as District Four representatives, so Frank probably does too, for a crosswalk at the library. Is there a crosswalk planned for this, in this project?
Not that I know of.
Crosswalk, like across from where First Community Bank is, across the road that way?
There's a curb cut there. There was plans for a crosswalk, but it never was put in place. And we, we need, we need, there's a lot of people that park on that side of the street going into the library, especially children. So we need some kind of a crosswalk with, or, or, or the elderly. But we need a crosswalk with one of the stop for, you know, these stop pedestrians or whatever. So who would we talk to about that Jessica, to see if we can get that in place? Or see if that could be considered?
Well, that would be Highway forty-one, wouldn't the state have to approve a crosswalk?
State, yeah.
Yeah, through or through.
So it may not be, I mean, we, I would see what AMAC, AMAC is the engineer on that project. I can see what they recommend and see if it's something that we, that can be added or maybe addendum to.
Because when the, at one time, and I can't remember which project it was, there was a plan for that. Like I said, the, the curb cut is there, you know, so that, but it, but it was never actually, Buddy, do you know why that was never done?
At the time, they said they were doing cost curbing parking places on both sides of the road.
Okay.
They thought it was a good idea to look for those spaces.
Okay. Well, now that we've got all the public parking everywhere, maybe, but we do get a lot, I, I do get a lot of calls, so anyway. If, if you wouldn't mind just checking on that, and see if there's any way to implement that. The library has, I know Vicky Horse has actually asked for that as well. They get a lot of complaints, people going in saying, almost got run over, you know, so, anyway.
It is between a block, so.
Yeah, so it's kind of an odd place.
I'll, I'll let y'all know back.
Okay, any other questions on the T twenty-one project? Alright, our next item is a budget amendment request from Buddy Daggie.
If you remember, a few meetings ago, we came before you and we have three outstanding brands, that they were burn brands that we had set aside for overtime, we changed the scope to buy body cameras. Well, when we do the budget for overtime, we don't have to do a CIP, a capital improvement plan for them. But when we buy equipment, we do. Now, I've been told it was my fault, after a lengthy discussion with Ms. Love and Jessica, I'm convinced, yes indeed, it was my fault. But therefore, we did not include this in the FY seventeen budget because the proper paperwork had not been filled out. Now, the paperwork has been filled out now, it's complete, it's the same number that I gave you before. At the end of the day, we're gonna buy forty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollar worth of cameras, it's gonna cost us seventeen hundred and something dollars.
Go ahead Lois.
Buddy, why did you think you needed to have a conversation to find out that you were wrong?
He was, he was so shocked.
Must've been the first time in history, that's a fact.
You say, yes, I was wrong.
Third organator.
Well, they gave us something to talk about. Basically, we did, I think the change of, from the overtime to the equipment happened about around the same time we were getting the budget prepared. So it was all happening about the same time and it just didn't get part of the process. So, and of course, our budget resolution does not allow us to change the bottom line of the budget without your approval. So basically, that's why we brought this back to where we can go ahead and make that adjustment. I think it's just an official action or just, just to take action on it to make sure that it's blessed to set this budget up and establish it. And all the other documentation is here. We do have, we did set up capital sheets for it where we could account for it based on Department of Justice rules and regulations and y'all familiar with what we went through last year with them. So we're just trying to make sure we have all of our teeth's crossed.
We're in compliance, yes, yes, we don't want to upset DOJ, that's for sure. Okay, any questions, comments regarding those amendments?
How many cameras would that, just curious, how many cameras does that?
Forty-seven.
Five forty-seven of them?
And each officer will be equipped with those cameras. We have fifty-one full-time positions, six part-time, but there's some positions of me and Ramon that will not necessarily have to have one, but that, that outfit of battle jar.
Okay, so the battle jar of patrol officers?
Patrol officers will have it.
All, all patrol officers will have it.
Good, okay.
Good deal.
Very good, thank you Buddy. Our next item is discussion of the direction for the planning and zoning board. I know we have some representatives of PNC with us this evening. So I don't know if we need to, if the members want to come and speak. I know we had that meeting with our regional commission representative to talk about some planning and zoning issues not too long ago. What do we need to do?
Mary, I can just speak briefly to that. I, I know it's been some time back when I was at the planning and zoning board meeting. And I, my understanding is that they would like to try to meet with city council and maybe try to get a better idea of the direction of the growth, you know, what our ideas are as far as where we think we want to take development, just so they can get a overall view of what your thought processes are as far as where you think the city is going and growing. And in what's appropriate zoning districts. So when they have matters coming before them, they might have a general idea about the broad ten thousand foot view about where we think we're going. That was my take back from my discussions with them.
One of the things I'd like to throw out to the council is, we have areas that join the city, that are but the city limit line, so they would not fall under the jurisdiction of our city planning and zoning group, they would fall under the county. But they have huge impact upon what's happening within the city limits. And to use just an example, is the project that Mr. Barby is starting over near the YMCA pool, over on West Over Road.
That's not a city broad, that's not in the city limits?
He's in, he's not in the city limits. I know there was, well, and I don't know where that is, there was discussion about that. But he has appeared before the county planning and zoning board and based on the eleven guidelines that they have to approve projects, they approved his rezoning request to be able to, you know, develop an apartment complex there. Well, being on the fringe or on the edge of the city limits, you're going to be, as you, as soon as you cross over that line, now you're in the city, which is a city road with city police protection, with city water, city sewer. So what they're doing greatly impacts what happens within the city limits. So I'm not saying that's bad or good, I'm just saying that there will be times where we need to work with our friends at the county on what they're doing. So there needs to be some communication back and forth between the two. The county zoning has not done anything official in that matter, but I did get a call on that today to say, how can we work together, the two boards work together, so that when the county has a project that's so directly close to the city limit line, that they know that they're following the city guidelines for growth and development and follow their own plan, and follow their own plan, and then it sounds like our group is wanting the same basic thing. So, so there may even be a need to have a joint meeting between the two. Maybe, you know, we could have some overlap on timing, or we meet with our city planning and zoning. Yes, exactly, we, we need to bridge that gap somehow. So I appreciate planning and zoning coming in and saying, you know, how do you want us to respond? Because it, that's that good communication and that education, that sharing of ideas, but we also need to involve the county in it as well.
Is that Barby property eligible for an extension? I mean, it's not leaving somebody as an island, whatever all that is.
They're directly next door to the West Side Fire Station, which is on, you know, that's city property. And that's one of those areas, again, where you've got some sort of confusion, yes, Houston, yes.
Just a little background on that, it was eligible, Mr. Barby did talk to us about it. He wanted us to look at the plan that he wanted to use and it would meet our, our standards. Just a little background on that. It was eligible. Mr. Garvey did talk to us about it. Um, he wanted us to look at the plan that he wanted to use and it would meet our, our standards. Um, the biggest holdup was he would not do two, do two exits from the property from a fire safety, um, issue even pursuant to that.
And yet they're located next to the fire department and there, and there's one of those options, op- um, not options, one of those situations where we're not in sync with what our, what our-
So it meets, it meets the county, but it doesn't meet the city.
The county, but not the city.
Well, now, is that, I mean, by having a s- single exit for ingress, is that, I mean, with that?
That's actually state law.
Yeah?
Um, and they may just not be enforcing it.
That is, the state laws have two exits, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
That's how the adopted codes from the.
Now, I don't know what their eleven, they say they, the County Planning and Zoning Group says they have eleven items that they have to go through and they answer yes or no, kind of a findings of fact. And then if the majority of those items are favorable to the rezoning, then they go ahead and rezone. So I, I don't know if that's on their checklist, I don't know.
So, go ahead.
It's actually two different issues. The rezoning, we could have done it. I mean, that, that could have worked through the process, but when it comes to the building plan,
Right.
that's where the issue went. Our ordinance is, in the near past, you have more than twenty units you have to have to ask. Below two twenty, below, you can have one.
Okay, so it wasn't designed in fact.
And that's state law?
That's our ordinance.
That's, that's ours. Is our ordinance above state law or state building requirements?
Then?
We, we have an ordinance as, as far as site plans for that, but it is also in the fire code, which is a state law.
So how can they say you don't have to have two exits and it's state law, but we do? And you're saying there's maybe not enforcing it?
They're not enforcing it, but that may be what the issue is.
Okay. That may be what it is.
Right, how do we find out if it's, I mean, thi- this is crazy.
Yeah, and that's where, you know, and they, they agree that there needs to be that communication. So that was the conversation that I had today with their chairperson saying.
Well, that would be, alright, cause if you had an additional cut, that cut would have to be on Kings Road, which would be in the city limits, is that right? Or where am I, where am I, where?
Westover.
On Westover?
It would have to be on Westover because his property sure doesn't.
And Westover is in the city limits, so he can't have a, can he have a, an, uh, an exit to a city road if he's not a city?
Well, if it's county property, um, I don't have the map in front of me, but if it's county property, he can force out an exit on any city.
Yeah.
Any road.
Onto a city public road.
But, and that's what, that part of this discussion was, yes, that, that, you know, everything that's going to be serving that property is city related. So, um, but it's a county property. So how can we make sure that those properties where you have those unique situations like that fit within the city's comprehensive plan for growth and development?
Now, it's, it's pretty simple. Well, I mean.
You ask the county, how can you approve something that's against state law?
Well, I mean, we have a property complex that's just like that. I mean, with apartment, apartments, you go in and go out at the same exit.
Well, that may be grandfathered in. Is there a grand?
I don't know if there's a.
It's, it's not necessarily a grandfathering thing. It may have been, it wasn't enforced on our part at the time.
At that time.
Well, so if, if they build it and then, then can they be annexed again if it's already built like that?
I, I mean.
I, uh.
That's what I would. I mean, that's, let them build it and then we'll just annex it.
I know that there are, yeah, well, but.
Problems solved.
Well, I mean.
Something I'd like to give a little thought to, but one of the things I'd like to mention is that, you know, I do know the West Side, West Side Fire Station is right there.
I don't think it will.
Yes.
And I think from the city's standpoint, I think we would have concerns, traffic and congestions and, you know, people coming out on the road.
Exactly, right.
Of course, these things are supposedly noticed and advertised and probably, you know, we could have gone to the Planning and Zoning meeting and, and maybe if we had objections to the project for whatever reasons, that's probably, one of the things that we can do is address those concerns ourselves if we are, you know, we're property owner and have concerns about the project.
Well, can we ask the city manager to ask the county manager with, I mean, just tell them, you know, we've got property that they want to come into the city, they're gonna build and come into the city. It doesn't meet state requirements as far as entrances, yet we understand that you're gonna let them build it in the county and what's, what's up with that? I mean, I mean, let's find out what they say and then the next thing is we're gonna toss a print, some big thing in the paper and saying what's going on.
Houston, do you have something?
Just to let the council know, we did speak with Mr. Garvey. We gave him a couple of different options, um, to where we can try to manipulate this work in and he just, he didn't wanna do it with any of the options.
Within the city, you know, we have the overlays and things like that that allow for density and I know he's taken advantage of some of those before, but, you know, the concern is, like you said, if we're, if the rules are in place and the city has chosen to enforce those rules, then we would expect all the rules to be enforced. If that's state law, then state law should be enforced equally for development. But the other part of that is when there's, these type of developments are taking place that impact our comprehensive plan and our land use plan and our roads and our infrastructure, how can we be a part of that conversation? And I, I, you know, whether it, and I don't have an answer for that. I don't know what the, uh, I would defer to our interim city manager, Mr. Hunter Walker.
Well, we at least talked and said, let me, let me get Houston and kind of see what the back situation is. It, it really doesn't make much sense that it been one of the others. We'll, we'll get back.
Okay. Okay. Now, going back to the item on the agenda, direction for planning and zoning, do we need to just have a, a, another meeting with our planning and zoning folks and, and discuss?
I, I think so, and I think that, you know, there is a comprehensive plan.
Right.
Uh, I'm not really sure when that was developed. Probably has been many, many years ago. Uh, I think the RDC kind of, you know, looks out after that for us. Uh, maybe what we can do, let's get the comprehensive plan, let's take a look at it and then get with them and, and maybe, uh, have a joint meeting. I think what happened last time is that it was kind of the idea of that we were gonna have that type of a meeting.
Right.
But I think we moved into more of a training session, as I recall.
Yeah, well, I know we talked about the comprehensive plan. Bobby, you were at that meeting, weren't you?
She talked.
Didn't she talk about the comprehensive plan as to be renewed or reviewed or in the next year? I mean, it was coming up fairly soon, I'd say. Yeah, just sort of a review. And we all did say that we didn't want to be a part of that, that that was sort of on a, you know, sort of a, um, and not an outside group would review it, but we wanted to have a little more direct impact upon that plan, both planning and zoning and council. So, uh, so that we could, one, know it a little bit better than we do, and then, two, if there was some thing that, you know, we were concerned about or, or wanted to make sure was implemented, we had that.
Well, I could get my hands on the plan and then, um, maybe kind of distribute that or, you know, figure out a way we can get to everybody.
Okay. And would that be huge, would it be under Houston's direction as the, as far as sort of coordinating the meeting and distributing information and that kind of thing? Just wanna know who our point of contact would be, would be Houston? Get your list out, Houston.
Well, to answer your question, obviously, we want to expand, you know, go out, we, we want to grow out.
Yes. Yes.
But at the same time, we, we must follow all state regulations for building codes, because we can't accept into the city limits with, with buildings that don't even
Well, my concern is.
meet, uh, state regulations as far as construction, because we could be, we could be an old heap truck.
Yeah.
And I probably will say this much, I mean, I'm sure that our, uh, building codes are a little bit more strenuous than what the county would probably deliver. So, uh, maybe we, we evaluate this.
If I'm not mistaken, you know, with, uh, when I first, you know, took this position, uh, one of the things we worked on was the land development code. Uh, it was my understanding initially, you know, the, the city and the county was working on a joint code, I believe.
Right.
And really, if I'm not badly mistaken, you know, the, uh, the county's LDC pretty much mirrors the city's.
Well, that was, I remember one of the reasons that we were, you know, in favor of adopting that land development code was so that they would be in sync, so that we would have, you know, some similarities and.
If, if there's any variations in the two, I'm, I'm not familiar with them, but I, as to my recollection, they, they should pretty much mirror each other.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, Hunter, will you talk to Jim when you see him and just throw that out there?
And, and, and be sure, and, and talk to Houston, be sure I understand the specific issues that we're talking about.
Okay. And Bobby, yeah.
Drive with, that really should be.
You, I think also what we're looking for is some, um, guidance about vision or philosophy of council. I know many of your, I've been around a long time, many years ago, we had a similar meeting and at that time, uh, members of council talked about what their major interests were, like, say, the major points into, to Highway eighty-two, Highway forty-one, you know, focusing on the development of those areas
Right.
or what the vision for downtown was. So just, I think, I think that's also.
Right. Sort of what's on the radar now, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's the guidance that we're looking for is just, um, so that if you have a vision, we understand what that is when people come before.
Sure.
So.
Right, okay, okay. Well, let me ask this, guys, then, would that be, would that be sort of piggybacked on the annexation discussion as far as coming up with the plan, the plan of, you know, properties that that would kind of, they sort of tie in together a little bit, yeah?
Would they all, tie in together?
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or, or specifics, Bobby, that you can think of?
I think, don't you, I think that's mainly what we're looking for.
Okay. Uh, and just, you know, what, you know, there were at one time, I guess there still are areas of the city that are particularly targeted
for, looking for opportunities for redevelopment and enhancements and all.
Right. And, and there are definitely those that we are.
And they may be the same as they have been with the others.
Sure. Yeah, okay. So I think we've all got a grasp on what the conversation will be, so, um, so good. Well, thank you for that. That's, yeah, that's, that's good. And thank you all for serving. I know that's a
Thank you, appreciate it.
thankless board. I served on that board at one time and, woo, God bless you. That's a challenge, man.
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
Okay. Any other comments about Planning and Zoning Board and where we're going with that and the meeting? Good, all right. Well, actually, we'll come out of our workshop and call to order our special call meeting.
Can, before we can, can I make one comment?
Oh, sure. Sure.
It's not there, but I want Pete's back there, and I just want to be sure and recognize E S G had five hundred plus days without a lost time incident. And, and those of you that don't follow safety kind of thing might not realize, that's a huge, that's, that's a huge thing.
It's a huge comp.
I mean, you, you don't, that just doesn't happen very often without, it's gotta start at the top and go all the way down and preach safety every day, you know, that's my, my thing. And, and they had a great celebration and Pete, just congratulations on that.
Thank you.
I was really scared, cause at first I read a news article where, uh.
This one right here, don't even text me anymore.
You know, I, I texted him, I said, oh my gosh, we're five hundred in day one, we, but it was, fortunately, it was another, another individual that got hit. Hopefully, he's doing well, recovering well.
It was, it was.
We have a bunch of next, but.
It was, that's, that's what used to happen to me when I was running things. And the next day, it never failed.
Have a huge celebration and the very next day, you were doomed.
Well, thank you for bringing that up. You're right, that, that's a very, that's admirable, and that's to be recognized, and thank you, thank you for that. All right, we will call the special call meeting to order, and we have several agenda items, and the first thing we'll need to do is get an approval for the agenda. And I know we talked about making some changes just a second ago, so I'll throw that out there for whoever wants to bring that up.
I would like to, uh, accept the agenda by adding, uh, the resolution for providing alcoholic, uh, alcohol beverage license to Ruby Tuesdays and the Pub to the special call meeting.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of those changes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that is approved. Our first item on the special call meeting agenda is Lois. Uh, she's given us our information. We need to, um, accept a motion regarding the twenty seventeen mileage rate and twenty sixteen tax digested. If you don't have any questions, I have the information Lois presented a few minutes ago. Good, okay. So we have a motion on that acceptance. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, okay. Lois, good job. Uh, the next item is also Lois's, and that's, uh, resolution for the GMA lease program change, so we'll take a motion on that.
So moved.
And we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I, I got one question, Lois. Says under here, it says, uh, line item one, exhibit F, the original lease is hereby amended by deleting row E in its entirety and replacing it with the following telecommunications systems, nine-one-one systems, voice, or voice data, uh, systems. Is that county owned?
It's just type of equipment that they will finance.
They, oh, the, the type of equipment that they will finance, oh, okay.
That, it's the type of equipment that will fall under the lease purchase agreement.
Okay, so that's the type of.
At a fifty percent rate versus a ten percent rate?
Yes.
I got you, okay, I apologize. I guess I read that wrong. I thought that they were saying use this as collateral to obtain fifty percent funds for whatever you're gonna buy.
Well, anything that, any piece of equipment that you actually run through the lease purchase agreement, you're putting that equipment up for collateral.
But whereas we could only get ten percent before, now we can get fif- fifty percent of that value, so.
Okay, all right, yeah, I'm good.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, just, Miss, Miss Redd, that.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and any further questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, okay. Uh, our next item is a resolution authorizing the execution of the First Amendment to the nineteen ninety-eight A Master Lease and Option Agreement. Uh, Lois presented that information to us just a few minutes ago. Uh, that was that sort of housekeeping, basically, uh, change, the discussion, oh, excuse me, I'll take a motion before we call for discussion.
So moved.
All right, have motions or second? We have motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed. You voted all right. I didn't hear you, okay. I'm sorry. Uh, our next item, uh, is regarding the, um, T funding, uh, that Jessica just presented to us. So we'll take a motion on that.
So moved.
We have motions or second? The second? The second.
Johnny, second.
Johnny, second, okay. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. Our next item is for Chief Doughty on his budget amendment for the JAG grant for the body cameras. Take a motion on that.
So moved.
Thank you, Johnny, and we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, let's call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, you got it, Mr. Doughty. Uh, next item is the, um, alcoholic beverage license. Uh, we'll do those individually. I guess we can do them collectively if you want to. Do you need them individually or collectively?
I would do it individually and, and if you can't, if you don't mind, can I get maybe a minute recess with Rob to ask him a quick question?
I have no problem with that.
Fine.
Just, just won't take long.
Quick question.
I didn't want to run up a big legal bit.
Thank you for that, thank you, thank you. Okay, we'll take them individually, do y'all want to take them individually or collectively?
We can do collectively.
Okay, all right, so I'll take a motion regarding the Lamp Ladder Pub and Ruby Tuesdays.
So moved.
All right, so are the motions or second?
Second.
We have a motion second. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are finished. Any other business to come before the council? Seeing none, it's called, this meeting adjourned.